Good evening, everybody. This time, please silence your cell phones and be advised these processes are being recorded. For those physically present in council chambers and desire to address the city council during the meeting, please complete the request to speak form available at the front entrance and present it to the city clerk. Speakers physically present or participating in Zoom will be called upon at the appropriate time. Each person allowed three minutes of speaking time. I'll call the meeting to order. At this time, we're going to have a meeting order Tuesday, January 10, 2023, at 6:00 PM. The invocation is going to be given by Dr. Fred Adams at the Rock Church, and after that, the pledge of allegiance will be led by John Gao. So, Dr. Adams, can you come to the podium, please? Everybody, please rise.
And if you will bow your heads in agreement in prayer. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for the City of Grand Terrace and for its efforts to move forward in the collaborative unity of trust, grace, mercy, and love for the people of the City of Grand Terrace. Holy Spirit, as we embark on this new year of 2023, we invite your presence here today. We ask that you grant our mayor and each member of this council wisdom and guidance to represent the people of Grand Terrace for the decisions that will be made throughout this year, as well as those that will be made in this chamber here today. In Jesus' name we pray, and everyone in agreement said, "Amen."
Place your hand over your heart. Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. God bless. And thank you, John, and happy birthday. Twenty-one years old today?
Seventeen.
All right. So, city clerk, can we have a real call, please?
Councilmember Allen.
Present.
Councilmember Robles.
Mayor Proten Wilson.
I am here.
Mayor Hussey.
Present.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Item A, recording additionals or any removal items from agenda? Do we have any?
No additions or deletions.
All right, great. So, we'll just go right into item B, a city council vacancy appointment presented by our city clerk, Deborah Thomas.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Proten, members of council, Deborah Thomas, city clerk. Before you this evening, the staff report supports all adopted goals and adopted core values of this city. Little background, city council on December 13th directed staff to advertise for the vacant position that is now on the city council due to the successful campaign of Mayor Hussey. On December 8th, the San Bernardino County Register of Voters verified the campaign, therefore this left a vacancy. On January 10th, excuse me, three applications were received on January 3rd from residents of the City of Grand Terrace, of which we did verify that they are all valid register voters in the city. The applicants who submitted application are as follows: Kenneth Henderson, Daniel Torres, and Vincent Rasso. All three are present tonight in the chamber. For the selection process pursuant to council procedure, city council is going to draw the applicant names to determine the order of the interviews. First applicant to be interviewed will remain in the chamber, and the remaining applicants will go to the community room and wait for a member of staff to escort them back into the chamber when it is their turn to be interviewed. Those applicants who have been interviewed can remain in the council chamber during the remainder of the interview process. Before you, there are nine questions from which you can select a question, or if you have one of your own, you may obviously use that question in place of the ones that are in front of you. The time allowed for each applicant to respond will be one minute for an introductory statement, two minutes for responding to each council question, and one minute for applicant's closing statement. Upon completion of the applicant interviews, each member of council will select their top applicant choice. A ballot has been placed in front of you at the dais for your use, and at the end of that ballot process, the city clerk will collect the ballots and tally the votes to announce how each council member voted. The combined top vote getter will be appointed by majority vote. There is one seat that needs to be filled, and at this time, that is the end of my staff report. Do you have any questions before we proceed?
Counselor, any questions? Councilmember Allen?
So, my question, Madam City Clerk, has to do with the way we're going to be voting. This is the first time that we're going to be voting this method. In 2017 and in 2015, or, let's see, in 2017 and in 2015, both previous occasions when this event occurred, we used the nomination process. A member nominated, another seconded, we voted, and it took a majority vote of three. And with this method, I'm concerned is that it could be a 2-1-1. Do you understand what I mean?
I do.
And so, if we, I'm okay with this method as long as it's for sure a majority and two is not a majority of four.
This is council's procedure. It was added to the city council's procedure back in 2021, I do believe, and we did use this process for the last appointment, I believe, at Planning Commission, but that was the process that we were going to be proceeding with.
The reason that, no, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
And I do understand your concern. If it is a 2-1-1, we will have to have a discussion. City attorney will present an option for you if that is the case.
Okay, because, I mean, that method that we chose, it works fine if there's an odd number of council members. When there's an even number, then we have this sort of dilemma.
Yes.
Okay? And so, maybe the mayor or the city, I don't know. But that's my mayor, that's what I wanted to state. Thank you.
Thank you, and I think if we do run into that problem, then we'll go a contingency plan and we'll figure out from there. So, we'll try it the way that we adopted the voting, and if we have a split vote, because we've been on the council before too, you know, it's been a split nomination, and we went to the vote and had two to two, and we had to go the next person. So, let's try it like this, and if it doesn't work, then we'll go back to the nomination.
So, what I understand you saying, then, Mayor, is that we'll make sure that it's a true majority vote, right?
Well, yeah.
Okay.
It's going to be the, yeah, if it's three to one, it's three to one.
That's true. I agree with that. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Go ahead.
So, I think Mr. Allen's question is just ensuring that the vote is a majority vote, correct?
I'm sorry?
My understanding from your question is that you want to ensure that the process will result in a majority vote, meaning three votes.
That's correct. Well, yeah, majority vote.
Right. In this case, it's a majority of three. I will, while we're doing the interviews, I'll look to see if a 2-1-1 is a majority. I do not believe it is, but I will double-check during the interview process.
Okay.
But my understanding is that you would require a three, minimum three votes, to constitute a majority to approve somebody.
All right. Any other questions? All right, counsel, did you guys want to pick one of your questions here, or you want to ask one of your individual questions? Mayor Proten, which one would you like?
I'll take nine.
Nine? Councilmember Robles?
No, I'll take six.
Six? Six. Councilmember Allen?
I think I'll have one.
One of your own, and I'll do number one. We ready? Let the council members draw. Okay. No, I'm sorry. Have to show you.
Counsel, the order of interviews will be as follows. Vincent Rasso will be number one, Kenneth Henderson, number two, and Daniel Torres will be number three. If we can ask Kenneth Henderson and Daniel Torres to follow Christine Clayton into the community room to be sequestered during the interview.
Thank you. I was like, I didn't hear myself. Hi, how's it going?
Well, thank you for coming out and put your name in the hat. I really appreciate it. So, you have one minute for introduction statement, then we'll ask you questions, okay?
Got it.
It's all on you, buddy. Good luck.
Sounds good. Awesome. Good evening, Mayor Hussey, and our distinguished council members. To our incredible city staff present, I just want to thank you so much for your service to our residents, and thank you to members of the public, you know, for attending this evening, your engagement in local government is really important, you know, making your voice heard and being present in these conversations. I'm really excited to be in community with each of you as we begin a new year of growth and progress and leadership for the City of Grand Terrace. My name is Vincent Jared Rasso, and I was humbled and truly honored to be encouraged and supported by my family, friends, and colleagues and community members to seek office for the vacancy on the Grand Terrace City Council to complete the second half of a four-year term. Congratulations to Mayor Hussey on your recent election, and I'm wishing you all my best on your endeavors, you know, leading this body in the next four years. As you've reviewed my application and statement, I found my home in Grand Terrace nearly eight years ago. I'm a longtime resident of the Inland Empire, and I was born and raised in Riverside and Colton up until 2015, with both of my parents having backgrounds in law enforcement in San Bernardino Riverside County, which has encouraged my pursuit for public office. And, yeah, I'll just close out there, and hopefully your questions, I can elaborate a lot more on, you know, other skills and experiences I will bring to the table.
Well, thank you very much. So, we'll go ahead and start with the questions. We'll start with Councilmember Allen.
If you don't mind, I'd like to use one of the pre-printed questions instead of my own.
Okay.
It'll be number seven.
Number seven, all right. It's all yours.
Hey, Vincent, if selected as an interim council member, can you please tell me how you see your role in the governance of our city as compared to, and what is staff's role in the governance of the city? So, the difference between, you know, council and staff position. Thank you.
Yeah, first of all, thank you for that question. I think it's really important to be diligent and mindful of, you know, that split in terms of the roles that city staff have versus the council, you know, who's the representative body of the public, of the residents of the community. So, for starters, I served, I graduated from Grand Terrace High School class of 2017, where I served as a student body president, and then I just recently graduated from UC Riverside, where I also served as an executive, an elected official for our student government, you know, population of over 20,000 undergraduate students. So, I have a lot of understanding of, you know, holding an elected office, being in a position, you know, where you're, where you need to lead others and be a figure of public service. And so, and I currently work as the Student Affairs Manager with the Campaign for College Opportunity, which is an education advocacy org, works really closely with community organizations, policymakers, and regional leaders to advance policy interests in, you know, higher education and K-12 access and college affordability. So, I'm really excited to, you know, balance this, a lot of my leadership experiences in policy and the relationships I've cultivated with more of a local, more of a local presence in the city council position, where we're really staunch advocates for what the residents want and working with our city staff, who are really advisors on what's possible. And so, I think, you know, working with our city manager to advance a lot of what's happening with state policy and housing, I think the Inland Empire region is something that's one of the fastest-growing regions in the country, and so, just looking at what opportunities are there for the council to work with our partners in the region, our state senate and assembly members, to really advance, you know, what kind of needs our residents have for the next generation, as you know, of costs are rising, housing costs are rising, and so, really just looking to, really just looking to be an advocate and a champion for the residents and being on the front lines of getting what, you know, hearing their concerns and what they need, and bringing that back and making it into something really tangible policy solution.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Robles?
This is kind of similar, but as a member of the council, how will you work with the body to facilitate discussion to develop consensus?
Yes, awesome. Yeah, I think that's, it's a pretty similar question, but I think it's a little bit broader, I think, you know, being mindful of conflict resolution, of, you know, working as a team, working with, as a council to, you know, get things passed where a majority agrees upon. I think it's the beauty of, you know, our democratic institutions is to be able to have those difficult conversations, and so, you know, as you might have seen in my application or my statement, you know, I did manage a staff of directors and coordinators as an executive officer, you know, of over a dozen student leaders who advanced really different issue areas, a lot of them which I didn't have particular expertise on, you know, for example, civic engagement, like, I'm not really as well-versed in, I was not really well-versed in that, so I really relied upon, you know, my director for civic engagement or my director for our labor relations to advise me and help me build an understanding and really provide that space for those conversations to happen. And so, I think that really coming to the table with the rest of you all, working really transparently to be as productive as possible, you know, I've worked in several different spaces where we come to a coalition with one being we have shared interests, but we have several different, you know, perspectives on issues outside of that coalition. And so, I think, you know, just working to advance the things that we have shared interests on and promoting, promoting that as, you know, the avenue of, you know, how are we going to get that particular thing done and then reclaim or claim that victory, you know, for our community and for our residents. And so, yeah, and I think that, I think that one thing in particular especially is just a lot, a lot of budget management. So, one of the strongholds I hold is, you know, formerly held a position as a director of government relations, and so, really followed along at the statewide level in Sacramento, the budget process, and seeing how those negotiations happen in state committee, in our state assembly and senate committees, I think was really a true testament to, you know, what needs to happen in order for us to be able to negotiate, what are the things that, you know, we need critically, and what are some of the things that we got to pull back on a little bit, so.
Thank you. Mayor Proten Wilson?
Thank you for applying. You actually spent some time trying to figure out how the budget works at the state level? Hallelujah. You let us all know. Number nine, name a success the city council has achieved in the last year and how your appointment to the council will help continue there, in other words, our progress.
Yeah, I think one thing in particular, I was actually really excited last year to attend, I believe, the State of the City that was hosted a few months, a few months back. I think that one of the really awesome things that our former mayor, McNabbow, did was provide a really detailed overview of the direction that Grand Terrace is heading, and I think that, you know, had a lot of conversations with inland regional partners, really close to different colleagues who work for the Inland Empire Community Foundation, you know, housing coalitions or different policymaker legislative staff field representatives in the region, and just looking at, you know, what kind of growth is happening in all of our different communities, I think it's really incredible. And for Grand Terrace in particular, I think I was really impressed with, you know, the plans, the, I think, first of all, the 2030 vision, as well as the plans we have for, you know, infrastructure growth. I think that there's slated to be like a hotel built sometime pretty soon in the future, as well as some investments that were made in, you know, a community center, as well as a local hub for our San Bernardino Sheriff's Department. And so, I think seeing things like that, you know, there's obviously a lot of work that goes on behind the scenes, pushing to advocate for resources like that, and so, I think that would be something really incredible to leverage in terms of the experiences I would bring to the table, having, you know, I'm probably like one of the younger people in the room or who have applied, and so, I think just having, you know, a stronger hold or a stronger grip on an advocacy background and that regional connectivity, knowing how much of an impact, you know, our region, we sit right between San Bernardino Riverside, you know, we just got redistricted into an assembly district that is, majority of it is Riverside County, and so, I think just, you know, recognizing what opportunities lie in a lot of our regional, like, you know, a lot of our regional opportunity is going to be, you know, really incredible moving forward, seeing a lot of the new leadership in our state government or in our county, you know, county board of supervisors, and just working really closely in tangent with them to have that, those open conversations and that dialogue about, you know, what are some things we need, we still need coming out of these really awesome investments that the council has made.
Thank you.
All right, sir, one question, then it's almost over. You're doing well. So, please share your perspective of financial conditions of the city and any thoughts you have on improving the current fiscal state.
Yeah, I think, can get started with this question. I think I shared a little bit about my experience managing budgets, you know, in different capacities. So, you know, I was the chair for the Board of Directors at our statewide, the University of California system, and so, just really being able to be at that broad level and then kind of coming down to this more local level as, you know, a representative for my campus, UC Riverside, I think, I think I have a little bit of, a little bit of an understanding of the financial operations for, you know, a local government like Grand Terrace. You know, I spoke with a couple council members as I was, you know, pursuing this application to apply for this vacancy and just kind of measuring like the multitude, like the very substantial difference that like the City of Riverside budget has compared to, you know, a city like Grand Terrace. And so, I think that one really, you know, one really big opportunity, one thing I will applaud, you know, massive kudos to the council on, you know, having such balanced budgets in the past, you know, in the past fiscal years, but I think one thing that is an opportunity moving forward, you know, as I've brought before, as I brought up before, is just having that advocacy experience background, you know, pulling that forward to the forefront of finding different opportunities to advocate for possible new streams of revenue so that there are opportunities for the council to hold on to, you know, different properties or different, you know, investments that it has made. I think that there was like a sale for the fire, the city fire department back to the county, if I'm not mistaken, and so, I think just looking into different opportunities for us to, you know, not hold, to hold out on something like that, working with local leaders and leaning on, you know, the relationships that we're able to cultivate or I'm able to cultivate, you know, as a legislative expert, I would say, in my five, six years doing professional advocacy and just really pushing for something more sustainable or different mechanisms of growth, you know, as the city continues to grow, we should be growing opportunities for revenue streams. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Well, you have about one minute and closing, you have a closing statement, Vincent, if you want to tell us anything that you might have forgot, or?
Yeah, no, yeah, I definitely have a lot more to say. No, just kidding. But I think, I think one thing that I really would love to highlight is just, you know, taking on a position, something that's interim for like the course of two years, I would really, you know, have a slate of things, you know, an agenda, like a slate of items to accomplish, you know, setting something that's a lot more measurable. I think, you know, being in student government, coming from such like a youth background, oriented background, just creating things that are tangible, because there's not a lot of time to get things done in two years. I've served a lot of positions where I only had a one-year term, and so, I think, you know, some of the goals that I really laid out when I was thinking about, kind of being peer pressured to do this, but, no, just kidding. But I think when I was really thinking about pursuing an elected office like this, was just really establishing more of like a youth engagement strategy for the Grand Terrace City Council. I think one really incredible thing that one of my peers in Redlands did is trying to pursue what opportunities there are for like a youth commission or a youth advisory committee to hear, you know, what the next generation or what the youth of the city have to say, also streamlining access to professional development opportunities for our students in our K-12. You know, I have a little baby nephews just finishing TK this semester, and so, I am, you know, really excited to see what kind of opportunities there are for students at Grand Terrace, Terrace Hills, where I went, or the elementary schools, and I think it was really awesome to be a part of like the Grand Terrace ASB when we started doing the graduation walks through the elementary schools, and so, just finding things like that to really empower and inspire our young people in the city.
Well, thank you, and I hope you keep up your inspirations and stuff, so, thank you for coming out and putting your name in the hat, and so now you can relax and march the other two.
Thank you guys for having me.
Thank you.
Good evening.
What we're going to do, we're going to each ask you a question, you already went through that, so we're going to give you one minute for an introduction statement, so go ahead and give us your introduction, then we'll ask you a question.
Thank you, Mayor Hussey, members of the council. I'm Ken Henderson, 23,000 Finch Street here in Grand Terrace. It's good to see all of you again. My opening statement regarding my qualifications for the council center around my 37 years of public service. I worked for five cities, including the City of Grand Terrace. 29 of those years was at the department head level or higher. 30 of those years was in the field of economic and community development. For four of the cities that I worked for, I worked directly with the council, 34 individual council members over the span of my career, and working directly in four city council members in four different cities. Four different cities provided me insight in terms of working with city councils and also serving as a colleague to the city council. I'm a former member of the Grand Terrace City Council, former city manager of Grand Terrace, and former chair of the Budget Advisory Committee.
All right, well, thank you. So, we're going to start off our questions with Councilmember Allen.
Mr. Henderson, as a member of the council, if you're chosen, please tell us how you see your role in governance of the city and staff's role. In other words, what's the difference between council and staff?
Well, council's a legislative body. Council sets policy and staff executes the council policy. Council-staff relations throughout my career, both as a department head and as a city council member, has reflected good government principles regarding managing the affairs of whatever local government I happen to work for. In Grand Terrace, three of the council members, the sitting council members, worked with me for a year when I was appointed to the city council in 2017 and served through 2018. I believe they can testify to my work and effort in this regard and the focus of let council be council, let staff be staff. So, to summarize, council sets the policy, staff executes the council's policy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Robles.
As a member, as a member of the council, how will you work with the body to facilitate discussion to develop consensus?
I'm a strong proponent of the free and fair exchange of ideas, with the best ideas winning. So while it's important to advocate for a particular position, it's important that the council members listen to one another, evaluate the responses of each other, and hopefully vote to support a particular course of action or a particular measure.
Mayor Proton Wilson.
Evening.
Good evening.
Name a success the city council has achieved in the last year and how your appointment to the council will help continue the progress.
This city council and its immediate predecessors have worked diligently and effectively in managing the fiscal affairs of the city of Grand Terrace. When I served on the Budget Advisory Committee, the city in 2013 faced a strong possibility of insolvency. And through the hard work of staff and council members, the city council has been able to establish and staff has been able to establish a program where structurally balanced general fund budgets have been adopted, funds have been deposited in the general fund reserve, and the rainy day fund has been used as appropriate when circumstances require it. The fact that Grand Terrace is the smallest city in the county and has inherently tough financial conditions to overcome on a daily basis makes the council's achievement in this respect outstanding.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Henderson, please share your perspective on financial conditions of the city and any thoughts you have in improving the current fiscal state.
I was instrumental in bringing to the council and having the council adopt a vision 2030, which is, continues to be the vision of the city of Grand Terrace. One of the most significant components of that vision is the economic development strategy. And unless the economic development strategy is implemented on a consistent, determined, focused, disciplined basis, it's difficult to accomplish the goals and the objectives that are set forth in the vision. So the biggest challenge to the council is to continue the good work that is done with respect to the economic development strategy. The other is to carry, bring about, carry about projects that can benefit the council and the city in the near term and the long term, with the most important project being the gateway of Grand Terrace's specific plan. It's a 132-acre project that has the tremendous potential to place the town in the financial trajectory that it has sought for virtually all of its years since incorporation.
Thank you. So our last part is going to be, just give us a one minute, your closing statement.
Thirty-seven years as a public sector professional, serving as a member of the Grand Terrace City Council, serving as the Grand Terrace City Manager during some of its most difficult times from a financial perspective, and serving the Budget Advisory Committee. I've been involved in the establishment of four visions for various communities in my career, one of which is Vision 2030 here in Grand Terrace. So I've seen councils that work very effectively together. As I said, I worked with 34 members, individual members of councils over the year, and I've seen councils that are completely dysfunctional and everything in between. So my commitment to the Grand Terrace citizens in the city council is to work effectively as a member of this body, as I've demonstrated in the past and will continue to demonstrate in the future if I'm appointed. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, Mr. Henderson. Evening, Mr. Torres. So what we're going to do, you're going to go ahead and get an introduction, and then we're going to ask you a question, each of us ask you a question, then you get a closing statement, okay? So you have one minute for an introduction, so it's all yours, buddy.
Understood. First off, I would like to apologize for being the most underdressed candidate here. My suit was washed away in the flood, goes to show you shouldn't dry your clothes outside. You may ask yourself, who is this person? Well, I'm here to tell you that I am the proud son that calls Grand Terrace his home. I was born here, I was raised here, and I always wanted to serve and give back to the city and to the community of which raised me and made me the man who I am today. That's it.
Well, thank you. Councilmember Allen, first question, please.
Thank you, Mr. Torres, I'm glad you mentioned that. I was just looking for a reason to go ahead and get comfortable, all right? So I'm with you, I'm with you here. If you're appointed to the council member position, tell me how you understand your role in governance of the city compared to the staff's role. What's the difference between the two and how you'll see it? Thanks.
My role in governments compared to, and to clarify, I mean, the rest of the governing staff, is that correct?
Yeah, I'm referring to the difference between what goes on here and what the staff does on a daily basis to run the city and what council does to run the city.
Okay.
The difference between those two.
Okay, yes, so my role is to be essentially the contributing factor as to what goes on, on a daily basis in this city. I am not here to be any kind of, how should I say, a monkey wrench into things. I am here to contribute to a solution to what this, what the city governor, government is to implement, and I am to put my own two cents in, as well as whatever is agreed upon is to be set forth. That is also to say that as an individual who is, who, if on this city council, I'll put my own two cents in and make sure it is heard, make sure it is evaluated, while I evaluate everyone else's opinion, and so that we can all come with a consensus conclusion.
Well, thank you very much.
Councilmember Robles.
As a council member, what is your role in the govern, excuse me, as a member of the council, how will you work with the body to facilitate discussion to develop a consensus?
So, to clarify, so this is a...
Yeah, it's a little bit different, it's saying how, between your, the council peers, how would you work with us to facilitate a consensus?
I see. So to answer that, first, it would be my responsibility to hear all the ideas on, that are on the floor, as well as putting out my own ideas, and so we can all work together to kind of, to make a solution. So, and that can be imaged in either us agreeing or having suggestions as to what can be an alternative, but in, in the end, the city council must be one voice in making any decision based on, based on the interests of the citizens of the city.
Very good, thank you.
Mayor Proton Wilson.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for being here. Name a success the city council has achieved in the last year and how your appointment to the council will help continue that progress.
The, the success with the city, as I said, I was born here, I was raised here. I've been part of this city for most of my life, and I've seen the best accomplishments. I've seen some challenging times with the city from a citizen's point of view, but I can honestly say that over the past year, the city has made some great strides into its 2030 goal of being fiscally sound, fiscally responsible, as well as serving the community and its citizens. And I hope to continue that, being as a city council member, if appointed.
Thank you.
All right, please share perspective on the financial conditions of the city and any thoughts you have in improving our current fiscal state.
The, the financial condition of this city is a great, is a great deal of me, and partially one of the things that I want to address or, or come up with a solution or moving forward with the city, assuming if I get appointed, the council position. What, what the city has done has made good strides in that. What I would bring to the table is, since I have experienced, or some experience in another, living in another city, see what they do, I would bring that perspective into this city. As far as generating either tax revenue through businesses or even getting more community involvement, so that it is not as fiscally taxing with the city, there are plenty of different ways of bringing a new perspective and even elaborating on the current things that the city is doing.
All right, well, one minute, can you go ahead and give us a closing statement, anything on your mind or what you think, or, go ahead and, thank you.
Well, as somebody that, you know, I'm just mainly up here because I love this city, I want to get involved, I saw the opportunity, I'm, I know up here, I'm kind of assembling on my words, but the important thing is that I came up here knowing full well that I may be the next council member, I may not, but the important thing is, is that no matter what, I choose to serve this city or this community with conviction, and I hope you take that in consideration in your vote. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So at this time, do they have any council members, have any questions? Any closing statements they want to say to the candidates? You have anything you want to say to the candidates before we vote? Councilmember Robles?
Oh, go ahead.
No, I just want to thank all of you who applied and, and we got a break in with her, but even still charitable, and thank you for, for still coming.
Councilmember Allen?
Yeah, I want to thank all three of you for coming out and, you know, Mr. Torres, you kind of started down this track, alluded to it, I think what's really important is, is that, you know, you know, selected or unselected, you guys got in the arena. You went in there and you got in the arena and you said, I'm going to go in there and I'm going to, I'm going to try it, I'm going to play the game. Okay, but I just have a question for the mayor. Since this is an agenda item, does the public get to comment?
Mr. Mayor, yes, any item on the agenda allows public comment.
Okay, we'll do that after one. Mayor Proton Wilson, you have anything?
All of you who are in the audience, staff as well as just members of the public and even those folks who did, you know, put their face in front of the microphone and, and answered questions and opened up their lives, this is the source of government for us and for, you know, what the forefathers saw in the game plan, and believe me, all of the fall deroll that we see nowadays in the news and so on, just, it's a, it's evidence of the fact that the system still takes a lot of work. And even with the number of votes to decide between parties and so on, we are fortunate because we are nonpartisan. And being nonpartisan, that means that we can truly represent the folks in our community. And sometimes we have some fairly scary decisions to make in relation to numbers and so on. Each one of us comes to this thing with a desire, a strong desire, to serve and to serve as well as we possibly can, I believe. And in that, just the idea that you are willing to come up here and participate is stratospheric. It's a, it's a, it's a great thing. And if we were to send this information back to the folks that put their, their names on the Constitution, I'm sure that there would be many smiles. They didn't, they weren't even sure it was going to last 100 years, so, and they had quite an uphill hill to climb. So I greatly appreciate all those who participated and urge your continued participation. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll do my comment, then we'll open it for public, and then we'll do a vote, okay? So, yes, it's, it's not an easy task getting up there, it's not an easy task, sign your name on the line. I think all of us been up there trying for the council position at one time or another. And, but you know what, really, and, Mr. Torres, right there, you know, he said that, you know, about if I get it or I don't, you know, that's the whole thing, it's, it's hard to judge, you know, it's, we're not really judging you, but we're trying to, you know, bring what's going to work with the council. And the experiences that, you know, you guys have here, we could, it's all great, you know, we all have to start somewhere. I mean, I started out just being a baseball coach, everyone would think I was going to be here. But, you know, we keep going, we keep pushing, no matter what. I commend you, all three of you, for coming up here and putting your name in the hat. A lot of people, they like to be the Monday morning quarterback and not put their name in the hat, but they want to tell you what needs to be done. But it takes a, a big person to come up and willing to take those hits. And, you know, we put our armor on, we take them, but we do the best for the community. So, you know, nothing, you know, please, if you don't get picked, continue to work for the city. You guys have a lot of good ideas, we want to, you know, move this city forward. And what really, really makes me happy is, you know, one day, I'm not going to be here, none of these councilmen, we might not be here, but seeing, you know, the future, what's coming up. And, you know, I, I applaud you and I, you know, and don't be afraid to even two years from now to put your name in the hat and run for the election. You know, we have a city clerk that will show you. But, you know, it's the thing, getting out there and working, and working for it, and you're working... And you're working for the people, you know, it's, and that's what you're doing. Overall, you know, like they said, my colleague said, we're not going to make everybody happy. And there's some tough choices here, but we have to do the choices for the future of this city, continue to thrive. You guys all grew up here, you know what it's like, you know, and, um, but I applaud every one of you for coming up and putting your name in the hat. So Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comment, anybody want to speak?
No, we do not, Mayor.
Nobody? All right, so at this time, I'm going to ask the colleagues to go ahead and, um, place your vote, then we'll give it to the city clerk.
Conrad, can you, can you give me technical support here? It won't, it won't open.
Do we have a council member?
Yes, I will. We do have a majority and the vote is as follows. Councilmember Robles votes for Ken Henderson. Councilmember Allen votes for Vincent Rasso. Mayor Proton Wilson votes for Ken Henderson. Mayor Hussey votes for Ken Henderson. The majority vote is for Ken Henderson. Three to one.
Thank you, and thank you everybody for coming out. And congratulations, Mr. Henderson. And come and make a statement.
Just a few comments, Mayor. I want to thank the council for your confidence in me. Most of you know me and my experiences. Mrs. Robles and I go way back from San Bernardino days when she worked for the county and I worked for the city. So it's been a long-term relationship, productive relationship, same with Mr. Hussey and Mr. Wilson. So I look forward to working with all of you. Can't wait to get to work. After serving as city manager for a year, I made myself fairly invisible because I think Mr. Bolowich knows that once you're a city manager in one place, it's, it's, it's easy to be perceived as meddling or not leaving. And so that was something that I wanted to ensure didn't happen. So when I came to Mr. Mayor Hussey swearing in, it was the first time in four years that I've been inside City Hall after I left the city council on, in 2018. So it's good to be back, I look forward to it, and thank you again for your confidence in me.
Thank you.
Does anybody in the council wish to say something? Mayor Proton Wilson?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Henderson, you obviously have the tools and that was definitely a consideration. But also, knowing you and knowing your tenacity for work, um, uh, you all, you realize you're going to have to slow down. Now, that also makes you, I believe, the oldest one out of the bunch here?
That's correct, sir.
Yeah, okay. Anyway, uh, I'm happy with the choice and I'd like to, I, I think this will help increase the fellowship amongst the city council members. And that's what we're looking for. We've got to have that team spirit and of all people, me talking about team spirit is, you know, a real stretch. So, uh, thank you for applying and welcome.
Councilmember Allen?
Yeah, I want to congratulate Mr. Henderson and I also want to reinforce what the mayor said to the other two candidates who came forward. There's an election in 2024 and the city is, like Mr. Wilson said, like Councilmember Wilson said, we aren't getting any younger. We're a diocese full of old grandpas, grandmas, great grandpas and great grandmas up here. And it's pretty embarrassing. And I'm, I'm looking for some young people to take this city over. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Robles, do you have anything?
Uh, yes, I, you know, to the other applicants, um, you did very well. You, you, you know, please, um, take us, take us on in, in two years. Come, come and apply for these, for these jobs and come the next two years and, and comment on whatever we're working on so the public there can become familiar with you. And I really appreciate you sharing your talent with us tonight.
Yes, and, um, one thing of advice for the other two is, um, come to council meetings, you know, see what's going on, you know, um, work out there in the public if you have, volunteers, we have a lot of volunteer groups here and that's what makes a city go, is volunteers. And just keep going, don't give up. I mean, we, I didn't get voted for the first time either, but you know, um, actually I was with Ms. Robles here and I thought she should have got it and she didn't get it, so I don't know what's going on, so. But, you know, never give up, never give up, never let anybody tell you you can't do it either, all right? Always, you know, you know what your goals are, you know what your initiatives, and there's a plan for each and every one of you, so never give up. I'm proud of, proud of you for coming up here and putting your name in the hat. And make sure you don't wash your clothes in the rain, that's one thing. All right, we're going to take a five-minute recess and I want to shake your guys' hands, so.
I'm not getting tricked into photographs.
I should have this gavel when my granddaughter's come over. All righty. So we're on item, item C, special presentation, landscape recognition presented by Ms. Halsen.
So before Leila starts, if you recall, we are doing landscaping recognition twice a year. This is the fall landscaping. Then we'll come back towards the end of the spring, early summer to do the, the, uh, the summer recognition. The idea was to recognize, to have our code enforcement people not just look for bad things, but look for good things and then have, have them, them reward the residents for that.
Well, I appreciate everything they do, I'm glad you're doing good things too, so.
I like to do good things.
That's good.
Makes me feel good. All right, I'm glad we're going to do this. Let me make sure I know what I'm doing again here with this little thingamabobber. So like, uh, Mr. Conrad said, we are going to do the landscape recognition for 2022. We're going to take votes, um, with council just by raising your hand and we will invite them back and give them their appreciation. So the contestants are divided into three categories. So, um, the first category, and I don't have my reading glasses, this category is to show appreciation for homeowners who thought out of the box. I don't have, thank you, thank you. Who thought outside the box, oh, that's awesome. Pertaining to use of color for their home, this makes the streets more diverse and vibrant. We don't have HOAs and we do encourage people to, um, show their personality with, with use of color. And then most creative, this category is to show appreciation for creativity shown by the homeowner. Homeowners in this category have gone the extra mile to share their creativity with the neighborhood. This makes the streets more interesting and whimsical and it makes my job a lot more fun because it makes me happy. I get to drive by and see different things, it's interesting. And lastly is overall aesthetically pleasing. This category is for the homeowner, homeowners who set the standard for pride of ownership, attention to detail and an overall sense of beautification is desired in this category. This makes the streets show more care and pride in residing in Grand Terrace. Just to give you, okay, so our first category is use of color. And we have three contestants. And these, all of these addresses were sent in by different people. We, as the public, we have city employees that brought in and some council members also gave us some, um, ideas. So the first is 12660 Garden. And remember, it's for use of color. There's a lot of, um, happy, it's a happy house, makes me happy to look at it. It's different. Next is 23059 Orangewood, which is this beautiful yellow house at the end of Orangewood, which is happy, makes me happy to see that. And then I really enjoyed this house on Peacock, 23029 Peacock. You can't really tell in this picture, but it's like purple, which is not used very often. Like that. So I'm going to ask you, get my handy dandy pen here, and see with a show of hands, who would like to vote for 12660 Garden? Okay. Who would like to vote for Orangewood? Okay, and Peacock, we're going to thank them for their use of color. Most creative, we have two in this category, mostly because a lot of it ended up being seasonal and what I was looking for was people who were out of the box all year round. So the first one is 22653 Lark. And I enjoy taking these pictures because I always drive by this house and giggle to myself because there's always something to look at. So this is kind of a compilation of all the stuff that's in their front yard. Um, if I panned back, you couldn't really see it in detail. And the second one is 12670 Michigan. This particular picture is a seasonal picture, but there's always something going on at this house. There's always constantly changing. So who would like to vote for 22653 Lark? Yes, it's just the two. I'm sorry, can I, two, okay, one, two, three, okay. And then for 12670 Michigan, okay. Yes, and as word spreads of this awesome, uh, program we have going on, we'll get more, we'll get more, uh, people in different categories. Overall aesthetically pleasing, this has about six. So the first one is 12114 Palm. This is a desert landscape, Palm Court, it's a, the little street. And we have 12650 Warbler. We have 12714 Blue Mountain, uh, which is a street, I'm not sure. It's a little tucked away street, we enjoy going down there once in a while, saying hi to people. We have 23028 Palm. And we actually did have staff go around and drive around and a lot of these are from staff. Unknown address, which I will get. But this was, uh, sent in by a staff member as well. We have 22727 Arlis, which is a dry riverbed. And I've spoken to this owner, they've worked on this yard for quite some time. I was really happy that they were able to get that done. So we'll start from the beginning. And we have any votes for 12114 Palm? So enthusiastic. 12650 Warbler. 12714 Blue Mountain. 23028 Palm. Unknown. Okay, I guess I better make that known. Oh, I'm sorry, you'd like to, hold on, okay. I'm going, I still got to make that known, all right. And 22727 Arlis, okay. And then the final category, which we will not be voting on, but is my favorite, was the most improved and there was no competition. Most improved, we are grateful and thankful for the beautification of this property. So that's it, thank you for your time, we really appreciate it and we will get back with the homeowners.
So next meeting, we'll bring the homeowners in for a brief presentation. Also, each winner will give them a hundred dollar gift certificate to either a nursery or a box store for, to continue their yard work. And as we go forward to the residents, the council members, if you see something, let us know and we will, or if you think your house is the place, we'll, we'll do it, we'll do it again next year, next, in the spring. And, uh, we, we really like to, like to recognize these people that make the, the community a great place. Thank you.
Well, thank you for your presentation. Now my wife's going to want me to paint my house, redo the yard. We'll never win, honey, we'll never win, so I'm out of that contest. All right, so, uh, San Bernardino County Sheriff's Department update presented by Lieutenant Lane.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Proton, City Council. Tonight, um, I brought along Sergeant Mark Addy. Sergeant Addy is our traffic sergeant. He coordinates and handles all of our OTS, Office of Traffic Safety, grant-funded work that we do here in the city. He's also our, our newly created operations sergeant at the station, so he's got his hands in a lot of different things there. But he's here to talk to you for a couple of minutes tonight about some of the traffic, um, activity that we've had here in the city over the last year and, and what it's going to look for, uh, from here going forward. So I'll introduce him, let Mark have it.
Thank you, welcome, Mark.
Thank you, LT. Recently, there's been a plague of catalytic converter thefts with our citizens in this city and the surrounding cities. That was identified by our department and by your citizens. During the recent months, we can come across these people with stolen catalytic converters from vehicles, parked vehicles in their vehicle. But the problem is, it's, it's hard to, almost impossible to identify a victim. We don't know where they got it and, believe it or not, they don't, they're not usually honest with us. So, um, yeah. A program was developed and with the help of the Cars and Coffee Car Club, Woody's Classic Grill, Harbor Freight and Autozone, we were able to launch this program and bring it to life on November 19th, 2022, at the Grand Terrace pit stop. We also like to thank the, the owners and the employees of the Grand Terrace pit stop. Without their help, we could not have, we could not have done this. We flew the information to the residents of Grand Terrace and 21 reservations were made by the citizens to have their catalytic converters on their vehicles engraved by me and another deputy sheriff at the pit stop. We were able to etch the license plates into the catalytic converter and then paint it bright white, that way we could easily identify it if we came across it when it's not attached to a car. This program really set forth some precedence to identifying victims and helping with convictions of these, these crooks that are committing these crimes. So in all, 23 vehicles were, were etched and painted and they were all residents of Grand Terrace and they, everyone came out, including Councilmember Allen. And the, the program went really, really well and we hope to do another one here in 2023, so. Also, as Lieutenant Lane stated, uh, this city was granted a, a grant from the Office of Traffic Safety this year. This was the first year applying for the grant and it was issued along with the other contract cities of our department. For this year, which is October to September, Grand Terrace was awarded $30,000 for DUI enforcement specifically. These enforcements are usually saturations where three deputies and one sergeant will be in the city pulling cars over, looking for DUI drivers. These are 10-hour operations that we do every other month. We were given a total of five. Also, DUI checkpoints are returning to our department. For a long time, um, we did not do DUI checkpoints. However, they just, we just started doing them again this year. So I believe the one scheduled in Grand Terrace is going to be around August 18th. That's a tentative, tentative date, but, uh, plan on seeing a DUI operation or a DUI checkpoint operation in the city. Also funded through OTS is traffic enforcement operations. We were funded five sat, or I'm sorry. Operations including distracted driver, primary collision factor, and just writing tickets to, to keep the, the collision rates down. We were awarded $11,000 for this. This includes two deputies and eight-hour operations. The last one we did was in December, thirty, in a total of 32 traffic stops were conducted and 17 citations were written. So the guys stayed busy, and we're looking for collision factors that are going to limit the amount of collisions in the city, so. The next operation for DUI is going to be in February. And actually, this Sunday, we have another operation for the traffic enforcement for, looking specifically for distracted drivers, cell phones, stuff like that, so. Just be on the lookout. That's all we have. Do you have any questions for?
Does the council have any questions, Sergeant? I, I do. So, you know, thank you for doing the sketch on the converters. I know Johan was part of that too, and really appreciates. Now, I read in the paper, you know, about the big, you know, apprehensions that they're getting from it and stuff, so. Has it slowed down any, or does the sketching help on that? I mean, what, what do you think, because not only salvage yards, I heard it's getting, you know, shipped overseas or melted, you know, down for jewelry stores, so what do you think, long-term on this is, are we getting a bite on it?
I, I believe we are getting a bite on it. They've decreased, but not, not enough to make a significant difference. We're not the only city that's doing this Etihad program, so it's, that is, that is helping. There was recent legislation just passed where they are going after the, the recycle yards that are accepting these catalytic converters, and they have to know that they're stolen. When a truck full of 1,800 catalytic converter, converter shows up, that just doesn't fall out of the sky. So also, a new law was passed for the possession of a catalytic converter without proper receipt or justification of where it was obtained. It is now a municipal code violation. Vehicle, yeah, it was a vehicle code violation. So we are able to cite them for that as well, so.
Okay, as far as speeding, because you know, we hear it all the time, and we talked about earlier. I mean, are you giving, hey, I pulled you over, you're getting a ticket, or are you getting a lecture? Are we still leaving out your justification, or?
That's up to the deputy sheriff. I was a motor cop for five years, and we didn't give too many warnings. But it's, 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 it's their discretion, based on, obviously, the amount over the speed limit factors, time of day factors, location factors, so, and a collision rates factor. If this is an area where we're getting a lot of traffic collisions and speed is the primary collision factor, then we're gonna start writing real tickets for, for speeding, so.
So you're gonna have a designated time for that, we get to, for the traffic thing? I'm just asking this for my wife, she just texts me.
We're, we're a 24-hour operations.
No, because, you know, like I talked earlier, I don't love to see a California stop anymore. Now people don't even stop, it's like a suggestion, so I don't.
That's true.
All right, thank you. Anybody else have any questions? Well, thank you for your time, Sergeant.
Thank you.
Be safe out there. Okay, our next item's a consent calendar. The following consent counter items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They'll be acted upon the city council. One time without discussion, any councilor, staff member, or citizen may request removal of an item from the consent calendar for discussion. Do we have anybody request to remove an item?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to poll number six for discussion.
Poll number six, anybody else? I'd like to poll number five, give the person opportunity to speak. So I have a motion for the 1, 2, 3, 4, 7, 8. And City Attorney, do you have anything to say before we make the vote on here?
Let me see. Nope. So it's basically approving the consent calendar except items five and six.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilmember Allen.
Second.
Second by Mayor Pro Tem, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, well, the first one's item five. So this is presented by our city clerk. And I'd just like to go with applicant. Was this the only applicant we had for this opening here?
Yes, Ms. Peggy Reagan applied for the position. This is one of our additional at-large positions. And we're looking forward to hopefully adding another member to the Historical and Cultural Committee, which would give us six out of the seven total that we have for the city.
So we still need one more after this?
We will still need one more after this, yes.
Okay. Well, I know they do a lot of work, and it's more than just doing historical. And I think, Becky, would you like to talk on this subject, or? Yeah, please.
Good, thanks for the opportunity. We are a growing committee. We started out, I believe, with four or five, and this will be our, our second year as the Historical and Cultural Activities Committee. We have completed four events, and we're looking for more. So we are very excited. We hope that you will bring Ms. Peggy on. She does have great experience in the past. We're excited to welcome her aboard, and thank you.
Thank you. Well, I was reading her application, and I didn't know that was one of the criterias, we'll play well with others. So, all right. So anybody have any questions on item five? Okay, I'd like to make a motion for item five, I have a second.
Second.
Second by Mayor Pro Tem, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you. Item six, Mayor Pro Tem Wilson, you wanted to?
Thank you, Mayor. We set up a, an ad hoc committee of members of the council regarding this par section 115 trust and how, and the funding amount, at least the initial funding amount. Now, it's a flexible situation to some extent. I just wanted to know if there was any kind of chatter back and forth about how we came to this recommendation of $500,000 funding amount.
Sorry.
There you go.
So the amount came from the current mayor and the previous mayor. That is the amount that they decided on. And also, the strategy that they decided on was moderate. So it came from discussion back and forth between myself and the city manager, as well as Mayor Hussey and the previous mayor, Mayor McInnes.
Can I ask, then?
Yeah, I'll, I'll inform you.
Yeah, there you go, Mayor.
So when we had the discussion, you know, initial amount was $1 million. And we wanted something to show for, besides, you know, we gave up the daycare. So conservative, moderate, because we, we figured the $500,000, that's gonna be long-term. We're not even gonna see it. That's gonna be to pay off the bills, hopefully for the council in the future, for the unfunded liability. The other $500,000, we're looking at putting in a CD, flexible ones, so we could use that for the community right now, on different projects or, or things, you know, like example, the amped a property, if we could do something there, or, you know, work on that. But that way, the residents here, taxpayers get something out of that also. So we're looking at the present residents, you know, enjoying the benefit of it, and plus the future residents enjoying the benefit of it. Best way I could sum it up, I don't know if the city manager would like to interact on any of that?
Yeah, the, the primary goal with that second $500,000, we'll put it in a short-term interest-bearing account. And in the process, we will engage an architect to do some preliminary design on the Peta property and utilize the funds then to provide, it's obviously not enough to really do any project there. But to begin the work of at least bringing in utilities, water, sewer, power, stub those out to the property. We might have enough to do some curb and gutter and sidewalk around there. Some very basic amenities, once we have an idea of what's, what's going, so that we can start piecemealing this into place. But certainly, get those, the utilities in, so when the time comes, that's one piece of the, the project that we've already taken care of.
And we did discuss using some of those funds too for our youth program, you know, to bring in the youth government and stuff. So we, we're looking on that, so that way we could, you know, like the two gentlemen that came here and applied, so we could build up the youth interest in local government. And so, like you said, we want to use the $500,000 for the future and the $500,000 for the present to get the ball rolling on stuff. Does that answer your question?
Thank you, Mayor.
Any other questions? Okay, anybody like, you'd like to do a motion, Mayor Pro Tem, on this one?
Motion for approval, item number six.
I'll second. Please vote.
Motion passes with Councilmember Allen, Mayor Pro Tem Wilson, Mayor Hussey voting yes, Councilmember Robles voting no.
Okay, so the next item's gonna be public comment. This opportunity for members of the public to comment on any items not appearing on the regular agenda. Because restrictions contain the California law, and the city council may not discuss or act on any items not on the agenda, but may briefly respond to statements made or asked, a question of clarification. The mayor may also request a brief response from staff to questions raised during public comment, or may request a matter of agenda eyes for future meetings. So Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comment?
Yes, Mr. Johan Gallo.
Mr. Johan Gallo.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Johan Gallo, 22808 De Soto Street, Grand Terrace. Purpose I'm talking to you tonight is, we have been working now for four years with Assemblymember Reyes on a grant. Obviously, with redistricting, that's pretty much dead. It died anyway. So what I'm asking the city to do, I'm working with Lieutenant Lane and also Sergeant Addy to put together a new grant, once we figure out what Sacramento's gonna do. I don't know if they'll ever figure it out, but in the meantime, I want to go forward and continue working on a grant for further sheriff coverage and funds for Grand Terrace. We can work out the details later, but I would like the council to put that on their calendar for things to work on as we get going in this year. Another thing that I think is important to consider, and I think Councilmember Wilson had brought it up before. Grand Terrace, Barton Road, is considered a highway. Given the number of cars that move through Grand Terrace, through Barton, through Mount Vernon, I don't understand why both of them aren't highways, why we aren't going for federal funding for those roads. When I sat with the San Bernardino County Transit Authority, and they talked about little Grand Terrace that I knew 40 years ago when I moved here, probably less cars when my mother-in-law moved here 62 years ago, we were seeing about 4,500 cars a day through the city. Eventually, that grew to 26,000, and that was before the Barton Road Bridge was finished. They project, in the next five years, that we're gonna grow to over 46,000 cars a day through this city. I think it behooves our city to take a serious look at federal funding for both Mount Vernon and Barton Road, so that we can get additional law enforcement coverage. I heard the jokes earlier about stop signs in this town are just a suggestion. And that's true. We see them, blow through them all day long. You can put fancy lights around it all day long, they're never gonna slow down. They treat a stop sign like a speed bump. They slow down for about a nanosecond, keep on rolling. So with that, I wish the council and Mayor Hussey all the best of luck in this new year. Understand, I don't go away. I've been doing this now for five years. Mr. Hussey and I have been banging on the same drum to get the San Bernardino County Sheriff's Department more funding for our city. And I think it's critical that we stay focused on that. So with that, I appreciate your time and look forward to working with you in this new year.
Thank you, Mr. Gallo. Yeah, one more?
Yes, Bobby Forbes.
Okay, Ms. Forbes?
Thank you. I'd like to thank Sheriff's Department for etching the two catalytic converters in my truck, because I didn't know I had two. That would have been crippling financially, had they gotten in my driveway, or taken them off of my truck. So I think the program is great. I think the community should watch for the posts on 92313, so that they can get their catalytic converters etched. And I thank Johan Gallo and everyone for continuing to follow through and trying to get more sheriffs in our community and the council. I look forward to this coming year. You know I'll be up here. I participate when I can, and I speak when I can, and I have something to say. I'm not as detailed as Johan and some of the other speakers, but I'm paying attention, and I care about this community, and you all know that. So I will continue to come, and I look forward to good things happening to our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Forbes. Any other items and public comment?
No, Mayor.
All right, so we'll close public comment. Public hearings, none, unfinished business, none. New business, establishing alternate planning commission and their stipends. So, City Attorney?
Good evening, and happy new year, Mayor and City Council. This staff report supports City Council Goal Number Five. Engage in proactive communication by providing further community input on planning matters. As brief background, back last spring, I believe in February or March, City Council had a discussion about the potential establishment of alternate planning commissioners, and in December asked that we bring that back for actual discussion and consideration. So as a brief reminder, state law requires that the planning commission be at least five members, but it does not provide a maximum number. State law does not address the use of planning commissioner alternates. It's, it's not a common practice, but, but there are a few cities out there that do have this. Grand Terrace currently has five planning commissioners that also serve as a site and architectural review board. So under the proposed ordinance, the council would appoint two additional members to the planning commission who would serve as alternates. In order to create a staggering terms, the first alternate would serve until January 30th, 2024, while the second alternate would serve until June 30th, 2026, and each of the terms would be four years. The proposed ordinance would also state that the alternates would not be able to be appointed as chair or vice chair except on a temporary basis if both the chair and vice chair are absent. The number of alternates, it's up to the city council, if it is interested in adopting this concept. The number of alternates is up to the city council. We currently have it set as two. And any changes to the number of alternates would also require the terms and staggering of the terms to be revised in the ordinance for consistency. In terms of compensation, that was one of the discussion points that we did have last time we discussed this item. We looked at what other cities that have this type of program have, and most have it set at half the, what the planning commissioner, regular planning commissioner would receive. So currently, we have it as regular planning commissioners get $50 per month, in which at least one planning commissioner, planning commission meeting is attended. So we have the alternates at $25 per meeting that they attend and participate in, meaning they can't just come and sit in the audience and, and receive the stipend. They actually have to be on the dais, participating in the discussion. So the resolution that we have presented would take effect the same day as the proposed ordinance. Some things to think about are more practical considerations. For example, notification of the alternate. Would we notify them at 6:00 PM? them at 6:00 PM? I believe our planning commission starts at 6:00. Somebody doesn't show up, would we call the planning commissioner alternate at that point in time? Would they have to be here at every meeting and determine if they need to participate? As you know from conflicts of interest, we can have one or two commissioners not participate if there is a conflict of interest, and still have a majority of three to participate. One practical question is, would they participate anytime a commissioner is not participating? So for example, we have five, maybe one is absent, they're not able to make it, they're on vacation, whatever. Does that trigger having a planning commission alternate? Or would it only be in the case of a conflict of interest? Those are more practical things to think about, and so I'd want the council to at least consider that prior to, you know, giving us direction. If the council wants to proceed tonight, that's totally fine. Also, as a reminder, that with any commissioner that we have, we have to go through the MATI Act, which is notification to the public for applicants to apply for the position, and then we would bring it to the council for selection of all the appointments. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. We do have the draft ordinance in the agenda package, along with the draft resolution setting forth the stipends for participation.
Any questions? Councilmember Allen?
Has, excuse me, has the Chair of the Planning Commission, the Planning Commissioners, have they been asked about this at all? Has the Chair, Chair Giroux, has he offered his opinion, comment on this plan?
No, not as far as I'm aware. Again, this is more of a City Council matter in terms of appointments, so.
I understand. I'm just, what I'm getting at, Mr. Attorney, is trying to find out if there's, if there's a need, if we have this need, or if we're just, if we're creating a solution to a problem we don't have, you know. And so, another question I have is, when a planning commissioner can't make a meeting, for whatever reason, they may be sick or on vacation, do they still get paid?
It depends. So the way the, the...
That commissioner that misses the meeting, will he get that, will he or she get that $50 for that meeting?
Well, the way we have it is $50 per month if at least one planning commission meeting is held that month. So if they miss one but make the other, then in theory, they would get the full $50. If they miss both, then they would not get anything.
Yeah. Because my, my reason I ask that is, why would we ask someone to come do their job for half pay? You know, I mean, they're doing the entire, you know, job that the other one would be doing.
Right.
So they should earn what the other one would be earning. Are the, is the alternates going to also get printed material, the packet, every, every, you know, month, or whenever there's one? Are they, we're going to have to start producing extra packets? You know, I know those costs, you know, and, and will they be required to, I mean, are they going to be ready? Are they going to be ready to sit in? You know, if we call them at 6:30, are they going to be able to come here and sit down and, and be knowledgeable? Or are we going to require them to say, okay, you're going to have to be knowledgeable. Now you need to read that packet, whether you call you or not. And then that's going to take their time, but they're not going to get compensated for it.
Mr. Councilmember Allen, question only.
What's that?
You're debating the question only. What's your question?
The question, the question I had, okay, the question I had was, are they going to get the, it was, does the planning commissioner get paid if they miss the meeting? Will the alternate, can they not get the same pay that the regular one gets, so they're going to do the same job? You know, I mean, if we're going to be...
Now, that's a good question. If we're going to have them sit, I mean, we have to worry about the pay, because they're going to have to read the agenda anyway, because they're going to get called up here for alternates. Is that what you're asking?
That's, yeah, that's one of the, one of the things I'm asking. Are we, you know...
Yeah, so, the way we have it set up is that if they participate, well, first of all, let's start with the general current rule. It's $50 per month if there's at least one planning commission meeting attended. So we have two scheduled per month. They don't always occur, but we have two scheduled meetings per month. So if they both occur, it would be $25 per meeting, in concept. So that would be consistent with the alternate, I think. In terms of preparation, I would think that if the rule is going to be that the alternate has to jump in, should there be an absence or a conflict, for whatever reason, they would need to be prepared like any other commissioner.
Of course.
Whether they end up participating or not, but that's kind of the rub of the road on this one.
Yeah, I understand. I just, I just want to point out that, okay, we don't have any planning commissioners that live within 600 feet of a project, or an infill, or within 600 feet of each other.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. So, any public comment on this?
No, Mayor.
So you want directions for if the alternate's going to get paid, same? Are we talking about that right now?
Yes, it's all on the table. Number, I guess generally, is the council comfortable with this concept of establishing an alternate system? And is the ordinance as drafted acceptable? And I've pretty much summarized it. The resolution would establish the, just the compensation issue.
All right.
And both are on the table for discussion and action.
So I'd like to have a discussion on this. Any ideas? Councilmember Allen?
Sure. I, like I stated earlier, it seems like we're creating a solution for a problem we really don't have. We may have had at one time some conflicts, but we have a procedure that I, and I know we have a procedure in place for handling whenever there's a conflict of interest. I mean, we've always had a procedure in place for our planning commission if there's been a conflict. I was on the planning commission for five years, and we never had this problem. And I know some of you, I mean, Mr. Wilson was on the planning commission for even longer. I don't know, maybe he experienced it, but I don't, I don't see this as being something that we need. I mean, it's not like, I'm not that concerned about the money, the cost of it. It's, it's, it's chump change compared to some of the other stuff we deal with. But then again, you know, if you, if you take care of your pennies, if you watch your pennies, your dollars will take care of themselves. And right now, I'm not sure we're watching our pennies.
Anybody else? Mayor Protem, yes?
I believe we did some legislation, some interim legislation that had to do with how the folks approach their utility responsibilities. And I believe that before they swore that they would uphold the U.S. Constitution of the state, as well as laws, Grand Terrace, they also had some information that they needed to review about how they're supposed to behave, what kind of commitment they make, and so on. And it was with the idea that, that if they weren't going to be able to do that, technically, since these are, you know, advisory committees, if we saw a trend that was a difficult situation, where, for example, we know that maybe there's some work interferences, or if there's some, you know, home life things, or whatever else, you know, that you sit down with the planning commissioner, or historical society member, or whatever, and, you know, find out what the real gut truth is, and it's always possible to replace that person, in other words, reappoint somebody else, that we may not have that problem with. So I, while I think it's a good idea to, to have a pitch hitter, I think it works good in football and baseball. I'm 100% sure it's going to work well for this circumstance. If we, if we get into the position where we've missed several meetings, or we've, you know, we have received some criticism because our process has been slowed, because we're not, you know, following up with that, so it's something we need to jump on right away, obviously, because we want to make sure that we're business friendly. But I also think that we need the opportunity for people to succeed and to fail, and then we can correct the circumstance. So I think we already have the tools, and I think it's our best position to, you know, keep within what we already have established, and then just work to make sure that we have the representation that we need to, to be able to make good decisions. By the way, you know, these are all advisory committees. So if it was the City Council, of course, you'd have to vote somebody else new, but this is a advisory circumstance, and if we see that there's a problem, it's very simple to fix. So that's just my thought.
Councilmember Robles?
I have a question for the City Attorney. Planning commissions are not advisory. They, they, I mean, to handle a lot of issues that will not come before us, about a, an appeal. So they're not always advisory. The issue that I remember with this was that you have, in a small city like this, a project where two people possibly have a conflict of interest, and you have three planning commissioners left to decide stuff. I'm not sure this takes care of it. It's almost like we have to add to the, to the decision-making if we know what big items are coming in a particular window, two-year window, four-year window. Maybe we should start looking at who lives 250 feet, is it 250 feet next to it, or 500?
500.
Because, for example, we're doing the Lewis group. Who lives 500 feet that's applying for that? Maybe we need to look at it from the, the, coming into making some of these appointments, or maybe we have to reorder business from time to time. Maybe that'd be a better approach.
Mr. Mayor, if I may briefly respond. Mayor Protem Wilson and Councilmember Robles, you're actually both right. The planning commission is advisory in some functions, and is actually a final decision-maker on others. So for example, like a general plan amendment, a zoning code amendment, the planning commission would be advisory and make a recommendation to the City Council. For other actions, like a site plan review, site plan and architectural review, a conditional use permit, they actually have the final decision with appeal rights to the City Council. So you're actually both right, depending on the nature of the issue. So with that, thank you.
Okay, well, you know, why I brought this up, because when we had our planning commission selection, and then it seemed like we were selecting new planning commissions every year, the person would stay like a year. Let me just make it clear, we're not stepping on the planning commission's toes. We're here to try to give them more resources and more tools. So we're not stepping, you know, we're not, you know, we're here for them. But when we did vote for the last two planning commissioners, it was recommended even by the prior mayor that we have an alternate. And I think everybody agreed, oh yeah, we should have an alternate, we should have an alternate. So that's why I brought it up. So now I'm hearing no alternate. So now I'm confused, like, what do they want to do? You know, have an alter, no alternate. And like Councilman Robles saying, we had that project down the hill with a trucking firm, three people decided the fate of that area. And that wasn't, you know, if we had an alternate, at least within four, or even two alternates, five. So we let three people decide what was going to go down there. So now we're hearing the ramifications from, you know, the vote from that. Where we could have had, they could have had the body, and they could have discussed it, and they could have looked into that. So what do we do? We don't have an alternate, or we want an alternate? So now I'm confused, because we all wanted an alternate, now we don't. So maybe we should vote to see if we want to alternate? Is that what we should do, before we move forward on this?
Sure, you could take a straw poll, or you could have me introduce the ordinance, and if there's a majority vote, we can proceed. If not, the motion would die, the ordinance would...
Well, should we bring this back to the table and have you come back with a vote on this, or we just, can we vote on it today?
It's on the agenda, so you can vote on it today.
Councilmember Allen?
So I don't recall ever saying I would support having an alternate. However, let me offer a suggestion. Since it seems to be kind of confusing as to what role the alternate would play and how they would be managed, would you rather expand the planning commission to six members? So and have us, the, just, they're, they're just always there. In that way, it's simple, you know, there's not trying to figure out when they're going to be there, and calling them in, and how much we're going to pay them, and all that. Just increase the commission, and that way you're, you know, if you're worried about five not being able to handle the job, then make it six.
I think you need an odd number.
But I don't recommend that either, but I'm just throwing it out there for you to consider. I think that the five-member planning commission has functioned adequately, especially since it now is dispersed throughout the city, and no one is within any, the distance of conflict of interest.
All right, so I remember you asking that before, and it was like, Councilman Robles said, now we're going back to even numbers, so now we're going to have three-three. That's why we have an odd number.
I would agree. If you're going to increase, it has to be seven or nine, but...
And then if you're Councilmember Allen, you're talking about budget concerns, now we're, now we're spending more.
Like I said, I don't recommend it, but I'm throwing it out there for you, some, you know, brainstorming.
Mm-hmm. Well, thank you. So we'll do this, we'll, we could bring it to a vote, I'm sure, and I already know how it's going to come out, but would it kill it, or keep moving forward. But like I said, my concern was, we have a lot of projects coming up, and I don't want to see the same fiasco of what happened over there. We're just, you know, actually, two people decided the whole thing. And it's no fault of the ones who had to recluse themselves, because they had to legally. And we have a big project, if we have Lewis, but you know, nobody I think lives by there. I don't know, I don't know the addresses of the current planning commissions. So this was a safeguard. This was like a pitch hitter, as Mayor Protem would say, or just extra person just in case. And I don't think it's going to cost the city that much for that. And the person that, you know, wants to get there, I mean, we could bring them up here, and they could apply again. But I think we'll go ahead and bring it to the vote, and see if we want to, if we want to continue this, to have it on alternate, or just kill it. So...
Did we have public comment on this item? Can we double check?
No public comment?
No, Mayor, no.
Thank you.
All right. So how do you want to do this? You want me to just ask for a vote on if we want to continue this, or have an alternate?
You could, you could, if you want to make the motion to introduce the ordinance, and then see if you get a second.
Well, I'll make a motion, introduce the ordinance. So, I have a second. All right, no second, so it's dead. We'll go ahead and close that.
Thank you.
Thank you. So any, let's see, what else we got here? Request for future items, we have none. City Council Communications, Councilmember Allen?
Thanks, Mayor. I just, there were no events for me, no committees or boards that I serve on the Solid Waste Advisory Task Force, being the only one, did not meet since Christmas, so I have nothing to report. And I just want to wish everyone, it's our first one of the new year, so happy new year, everyone, and I look forward to 2023.
Thank you. Councilmember Robles?
Yes, I attended my first San Bernardino County Transportation Agency meeting, and it was a very long day. We went into, well, past two. So we have a little bit of, a lot of going, going on, because committees have to be appointed and all that. So it was a little bit of a scramble to see who's, who's seated where. I'm on the, of course, the general meeting, and then the seat, and city typically serves on the transit committee. And I guess new for the city is I asked to serve on the SCAG Economic and Human Development Committee, so I'll be sitting on that. I also just wanted to mention on the vote for the, how to spend the $500,000, I don't have a problem with the $500,000. What I do have a problem is for it being on the consent calendar. And then I wish, the reason I voted no was because there was some discussion, and I was scrolling to see on the agenda, where we started talking about spending money on the utilities for the Peta thing. Because I was like, I didn't see that on the agenda, and it wasn't on the agenda. So I... and it, it wasn't on the agenda, so I.
It was just a suggestion, Councilor.
That was, yeah, so I was like.
They were just saying what would we do with the five-hundred thousand, so it wasn't set in stone, it was just like a pie in the sky thing.
Yeah, but the, the, the reason for the ad hoc thing was just to talk about an investment strategy.
It was just.
That was the scope of the, of the work.
Yeah, it was just a what we can do, so we set that aside, so there's no set stone money.
Yeah, but again, that, my, my thing is that we have to, the, the direction was an ad hoc committee to discuss the investment policy for five-hundred thousand, and I would like to have a, how that's going to be steered in the future, was one of the things I wanted to see the committee to come back with. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few cleanup items, obviously, we've had a rainy few days here and there, and in, in relation to that, water and considerations, I believe we talked about the idea of approaching Riverside Highland regarding a seat, and I wondered if there had been any progress made on that.
There's been a discussion with Riverside Highland about voting, sorry, with Riverside Highland about voting the shares. There would have to be a formal action from the council requesting a seat to the Board of Directors, we can't just tell them we want a seat, they have to offer us the seat.
Okay, so then I would have to make it a, an agenda item, then?
Yeah, we, and we can put it on the agenda if the.
Okay.
And, well, you know what, I'll just put it on the agenda, if I see heads nod. Yeah, okay.
Now, would that be, and of course, this is a completely different issue, but we've had some long-in-the-tube situations with the school district, and we've been really good kids in relation to the school district and cooperation with them, and so far, they haven't done flat in relation to the auditorium being demolished or the Colton Bridge work. So, it would seem to me that it might be time for us to start putting the spurs to them a little bit about what they're doing, it, would it, would it be this council's thought pattern in maybe setting up a, a de facto group to attend their meetings, or whatever, I don't know what device we would try to instrument to be able to get them off the pot.
It would be up to you whether or not you choose to attend their meetings. Staff has been working with the school district regarding the building, there are plans underway, they are preliminary enough that they're not ready to make a presentation, but well-developed enough that there is progress and discussion that way. So, we, we, we met with them in November, again, before Christmas, it's just, they're not ready to, they're not ready to make their announcement, and we're not in a position to where we're going to undercut them and make the announcement for them on what their plans are.
I can understand that, and while it, it sounds like a good way to proceed, the unfortunate thing is, is the school district took twenty years to figure out the last thing they did. So there's really no reason for us to wait another twenty years for this to take place. So, I, I would like to put a little emphasis on how we go about some communication with them, obviously, they don't feel it's a priority, and we do feel it is a little bit of a priority for them to implement, they've got the keys and we don't have, we don't have that, so. Then also, I thought the, the, the suggestion about road work by one of our constituents is an excellent one, obviously, I'm really concerned about our roads, you know, the shape of our roads, and we've been working tirelessly trying to, you know, keep things from falling apart there, but I really do think it's an honest case we can make with FEMA, or with, you know, the Road Department, one way or the other, in some of our storm drain and road situations, if within the, within the community, and specifically with Mount Vernon and, and Barton, because we inherit such a tremendous amount of traffic. And I'm sure that our, our policemen would say the same thing, I mean, it's just a completely different situation than it was when the city was formed forty years, forty-three years ago, so. And then last but not least, I don't think, I haven't heard anything on the agenda for a while, but updating the emergency plan? We have seen graphically what happens when we're not prepared, and we're not the only ones, obviously, but I got to think a few other people have put their foot on the gas in relation to the emergency preparation plan, because now there's a lot more in the queue, there's a, there's a lot more than just what they had so far as ninety-five percent earthquakes and five percent, well, you might have a fire someplace. You know, the last time I looked at the emergency preparation plan, that's exactly what they were pretty much tagging as our big concerns. So, now we know that we have to worry about, you know, people gathering up and deciding they're going to take over the city, and, and, you know, breaking windows to get into the Capitol, and, and, you know, you know, things like COVID and bacteriological situations, and a bunch of things that probably need to be addressed, so. Anyway, those are my saves, you know, on my little list, and so I thought I'd kind of see if maybe we can get those addressed eventually. Thank you.
Thank you. Sure that was a little list? Pretty big list.
It's the beginning of the year.
All right, well, on mine, I just had, you know, I attended the OmniTrans, and in March, they're not going to do Zoom meetings anymore, they're going to, by state law, or you have to physically attend. So, and then January eleventh, they're recognizing, it's a blue day, the wear, blue for human trafficking. And then Frank Navarro was appointed the vice chair from the Mayor Colton, and they still have free rides for students who are, you know, going to school, which is good. And then one thing I really admired, and my son, he actually works on that in South Carolina, is they have an apprentice program, work with the San Bernardino County College for the maintenance tech mechanic, so their OmniTrans, pretty much, if you go to school and you learn their apprentice program, you almost have a job, so it's a, it's not a job, that's a career, it's a good career to have. So that's all I have, and City Manager, you have communication?
Yeah, first I'd like to thank the residents during the, the storm season, it's been, you know, as Mayor Protem Wilson said, it's been a couple of days, actually, it's been about three weeks of off and on, pretty heavy weather, and the residents have been really good about working with us, keeping trash out of the gutters, keeping the, the dirt and silt from running in and, and clogging drains, and without their, their diligence throughout the year, we really would have a big mess. And I'd also like to thank our, our public work staff for, you know, working in this weather and keeping the, the floodgates open, because it has been a real challenge. Also, just as an update, we've been kind of playing with city hall hours since November, adjusting people's schedules, we've been open from as early as seven-thirty to five-thirty, starting the, for the next couple of months, we'll be open till five, eight AM till five-thirty PM, so that extra half hour, those people come home from work, they can come home and transact city business or take time off a little bit early, rather than take a big chunk out of the day to, to take care of that. So we'll, we'll be open from eight till five-thirty, and then we, we may be adjusting as we go forward from that. Thank you.
Thank you. So with that, we're going to, we have a closed session, but if you are not here when we come back, our next meeting is going to be Tuesday, January twenty-fourth at six PM, but I want to thank everybody who came out tonight, and, and thank my council, you know, for all their work they're doing, so. With that, we'll recess to closed session.
Mr. Mayor, if we could read the title?
New at this, so closed session, conference with labor negotiations pursuant to government code, section five-four-nine-five-seven-point-six. Is that all you need?
That's it, thank you.
All right, we're going to reconvene to open session. Staff was given direction for the conference with labor negotiation pursuant to government code, section five-four-nine-five-seven-point-six. Is that all I have to say there, Mr. Senator Tenny, just like that?
That's it.
Okay. So, that's a report of that, so we're going to be adjourned until the next city council meeting, January twenty-fourth, 2023 at six PM. Any request to have an item placed on a future agenda must be made in writing and submitted to the city clerk's office, and requests will be proceeded in accordance with city council procedures. Have a good night.